You could see her earlier. She's around, okay. All right, well, in that case, staff is ready? Commissioners, ready? Okay. Call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission Special Meeting, Thursday, January 17th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, in council chambers. We call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Staff, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The first item, PCO-1-13, we've had a request from the applicant to continue that item to the next Planning Commission meeting, so that item will not be discussed tonight and has been removed from the agenda.
All right, thank you. Then we will proceed to PCO-2-13.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, right, sorry about that, yep. Roll call.
Mr. Seifried.
Present.
Mr. Ernst.
Present.
Ms. Fizemee.
Excused.
Ms. Harwitz.
Present.
Mr. Eich.
Present.
Mr. Castor.
Present.
Mr. Prevattel.
Present.
Ms. Swartzbaum.
Excused. All right, the approval of minutes of December 4, 2012, I hope you've all read them. Moved by Kenny Eich, do we have a second?
Second.
Bill Prevattel, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, all right. Madam Secretary, sign. Thank you. All right, so we've done that, we have no communications, no other continued hearings, so now we move to PCO-2-13. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use amendment to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for the property generally located on the northwest quadrant of northeast 135th Street and 6th Avenue, consisting of five contiguous lots totaling approximately 1.1 acres in size, from a medium-density residential land use designation to a high-density residential land use designation, and to expand the neighborhood redevelopment overlay, NRO district boundary depicted on the future land use map, to include the subject property in order to allow for the proposed redevelopment of the vacant site, consistent with the intent of the city comprehensive plan. Further, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the subject land use amendment as required by Florida law, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tanya Wilson-Sijor with the Community Planning.
Wait, one minute. Before we begin, I would like to enter an objection once again to the method of advertising for these land use changes. I did visit the property today, and there's one small sign with no schematic. The attachment to our agenda item is copies of virtually unreadable, densely worded ads that are in the Miami Business Review. I believe that all the surrounding communities use the Miami Herald and use schematics to show when there's changes like this, and, you know, for worthy applications, it's unfair to not notify the public as to what's going on in the city and to invite community participation. It is, after all, a community planning element, and you will see, again, an empty chambers. People from the community do not turn out, and these are important issues for the community to be involved in, so I'd like, once again, to tell staff that I object to this continuing use of the Miami Business Review of densely worded, technical jargon-type advertisements. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes the objections of Ms. Harwitz. Aye, staff report, please.
For the record, Tanya Wilson-Sijor with the Community Planning and Development Department. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for the subject lots, from medium-density residential to high-density residential land use, and expand the neighborhood redevelopment overlay, NRO district boundary, to include the subject lots, and forward to city council for final consideration. Just to orient you with the project, it's located on the northwest quadrant of the intersection of northeast 6th Avenue and northeast 135th Street. The applicant, Conestoga Holdings, owns eight contiguous lots, that's lots 1, 2, 3, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, Block 1 of the Small Wood Manor subdivision. The five subject lots, consisting of 47,993 square feet, or 1.1 acres in size, is a subset of a larger development containing 91,476 square feet, or 2.12 acres in size. The site currently has two different residential land use designations, that's reflected in the future land use map. Three of the eight lots have a land use designation of high-density residential and are located inside the city's NRO district. However, the remaining five lots have a land use designation of medium-density residential and are located outside of the NRO boundary. The applicant filed a small-scale land use.
I'm sorry, Tanya, can you give us the lot numbers that are outside that you're referring to? I should follow along with our map.
Okay, not a problem.
Please. I don't think.
Let me get a map, and then I can tell you.
Okay, lots?
Okay, lots 13, 14, and 15 are located inside of the NRO, and lots 1, 2, 3, 11, and 12 are located outside of the NRO.
And how about lot 10? That's my, okay.
Lot 10 is not included in the development.
Lot 11 and 12, 1, 2, and 3, are they R4, or is that a mixture of R4 and R?
Those are all R5 lots. 13, 14, 15 are your R4 lots.
R4.
Correct.
Okay, 12, 11, 3, 2, and 1?
1, 2, 3, 11, and 12.
Are.
Are R5.
R5.
And your 13, 14, 15 are R4. The lots that are inside the NRO are 13, 14, and 15. The lots outside of the NRO are 1, 2, 3, 11, and 12.
Okay, that is R5.
Correct.
Currently.
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was the other way around, so I'm glad you pointed that out.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you.
The applicant filed a small-scale land use application with the Community Planning and Development Department, requesting to amend the future land use designation of the five subject lots from medium-density to high-density residential land use, in an effort to homogenize the land use designation across the entire site. Additionally, the applicant is requesting that the city expands the western boundary of the NRO to include the five subject lots, in order to take full advantage of the bonuses and incentives across the entire development, as opposed to a portion of the development, as is currently the case. The applicant is also proposing to partner with the Carrefour Housing Group, and in order to construct a mixed-use complex on the project, and it will include residential, community facility, and retail office use. And applicant envisions that the residential portion will be created mainly for elderly veterans, and the other complementing uses will serve the area residents. Now, based on the LDR requirements, Article 3, Section 3-1105, has specific criteria that have to be met for all land use amendment requests, and based on staff's analysis, staff believes that the applicant has met those requirements, and we're also including conditions as a part of our recommendation of approval. I'm going to read those conditions into the record. The first is that the applicant submit a draft declaration of restrictive covenant to office of the city attorney at least 30 days from final council approval date for review prior to final recordation.
I'm sorry, again, do you have, do we have a copy of that that you're reading to us right now?
Yes, this is on page 6.
Page 6?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm reading the conditions, we're recommending approval with conditions, and they're submitting the declaration of restrictive covenant.
Yeah, I have the old copy. This has got.
That's not a problem.
No, I have it, I have it.
So the first condition under the recommendation of approval is that they submit a draft declaration of restrictive covenant to the office of city attorney at least 30 days from final council approval date for review prior to final recordation. The applicant will also furnish a copy of the recorded documents to Director of Community Planning and Development, once the instrument has been recorded with the county. Number 2, the applicant shall consolidate the eight lots, as well as any abandoned alleyways in the proposed development, through a waiver of plat, and submit said document to the city attorney's office prior to final recordation. The applicant will also furnish a copy of the recorded document to the Director of Community Planning, once the instrument has been recorded with the county. And number 3 is that the applicant is required to obtain site plan review and approval for the proposed new development prior to obtaining final building permits, and as such, the applicant shall contact the zoning administrator in order to obtain supplemental instructions and subsequently file a site plan application. This is the end of staff's report. The applicant is here and wishes to make a presentation on the record at this time.
Good evening, my name is John Delagloria. My law office is at 9155 South Bayland Boulevard, Suite 1014 in Miami. It's nice to see you all. I've been hanging around the city for going on 20 years now, and apparently you can't get rid of me. As staff has indicated, we're here for, in fact, four separate items, although the first two hearings are, you can kind of put together, because in addition to changing the comp plan, those first two items, you're going to have the concomitant zoning changes. So basically, what we're asking for, I'm sure all of you know the site, northeast 6th and 135th Street. In the last thousand years, the only thing that's ever appeared on that site are political campaign signs that, when they're not with our permission, I'm busy tearing them down. That site is, of course, one of the major entrance ways to the city. The other thing about that site is that that neighborhood, as you know, is in dire need of kind of a complete overhaul. Some of you may remember that when we did the Biscayne Landing Agreement back in 2002, and we created the Community Redevelopment Agency, northeast 6th Avenue was one of the streets that we were particularly interested in renovating, rehabilitating, because, well, you all know what that neighborhood is like. In going through the staff report, we have no problems with any of the conditions that have been recommended. The thing I would like to do, and I should have done earlier, is just introduce some people who are with Carrefour Supportive Housing. Mr. Ray, Tony Ray, is kind of the developer of the site, and Paula Roman is the person that we've been working with very closely. Paula, by the way, I don't know if any of you recognize her, but she used to intern here in the city, and she's a city resident, so it's more than just a job for her. Just looking at some of the prior projects of Carrefour.
And so before you saw that you were coming in, this was a rendering that.
I'm going to talk in the mic.
First time anybody ever told me I need a microphone. The picture on the bottom is the rendering on the easel, is what this turned out to be. I don't think any of you had an opportunity to actually see that property, which is on 54th Street and 14th Avenue. It is a magnificent building. I know you know that there are several companies in town that do this type of housing. Pinnacle, of course, is probably the, you know, one that you would be most familiar with. When Jack Yocas and I visited the site, it's really unique for this type of housing. The properties have wraparound balconies. I know I don't have one of those. It's truly a magnificent project. The other building on this easel.
What is the height of that building?
One of the bottom is eight stories.
Yeah, the 54th and 14th Avenue one?
First state your name for the record and your address before we proceed.
Tony Ray, Carrefour Supportive Housing, 3370 Southwest 17th Street, Miami, Florida, 33145.
All right.
The building on the bottom is Schuler Manor, that's eight stories and about 90 feet high.
How many feet high?
About 90 feet high.
90, okay.
I don't know if you have in your package, hopefully you do, the copy of the needs assessment?
Correct.
Has that been provided? As you can see, the application is completely consistent with all the requirements under the city's laws, and the needs assessment also supports this project. As far as we're concerned, we want to make this a signature building for this city. It is, as I said, a kind of entranceway on 135th Street, and as staff's report points out, specifically in Sections 5 and 7, regarding the conditional use permit, which is coming up after, it's the third item on your agenda, the staff believes that this project is going to be a catalyst for the neighborhood, and when you have future projects, hopefully, when you have future projects in this area, those projects will have to be considered in light of what this design and this project is going to be. So, as I say.
What do you mean by that?
Well, right now, when you look at the built-out character of that neighborhood, this is not exactly that, okay? When future projects come along, staff is going to look at those projects to see how they work with the built-out character of the neighborhood. So we're trying to make a statement and be like the first building that others are going to have to follow, as far as the quality of work, the design of the property, because, let's face it, northeast 6th Avenue needs to be torn down and redone. The properties there are, they're derelict, the rents are not what they should be for those type of properties. And again, we just want to like kick-start the neighborhood. That's exactly what we want to do with this project.
Yes, Mr. Ernst.
Mr. Delagloria.
Yes.
What makes you believe that you would be able to attract tenants or the clients that you would want in this building? What sort of, what sort of a goal or an incentive would you have for those tenants to make it desirable over anything else in that neighborhood?
Well, I don't think that we have to worry about the desirability of that property. Right now, staff has identified that the city has over, I think it's 240 people on a waiting list who want to live in that property. The needs assessment certainly shows that the people in this community need this type of housing. If you look at that needs assessment, you'll see that they have said that maybe 50% of the buildings in that neighborhood are in disrepair. The amount of money that people make in this community is rather low, almost 50% of the people in this community make less than $25,000. I don't think there's going to be any problem in that, and besides the Carrefour Supportive Housing, this is what they do, and they are able to find the veterans, the workforce housing, that this project will supply.
And a follow-up question, if I may, again.
Yes, Mr. Ernst.
The large footprint is mainly building, or is there any part of the development which would be dedicated to any sort of greenery, or is it just mainly this building and everything would be self-contained in this particular structure that would take up the entire footprint? Or is there other components to the entire footprint that would occupy?
The first floor, we want to make this a mixed-use development. The first floor of the property will be either retail or other social-type uses. Under your code, if we're going to have a mixed use, we have to have the first floor being the retail, commercial component. As far as the plan itself, based on what is approved by the city, Carrefour will then go back and start working on some architectural drawings, because they didn't want to put the cart before the horse. We needed to have this property, the comp plan changed, the zoning changed, conditional use permit, vacation alleyways, so, you know, we need to put that in place before they can go back and start figuring out what's going to be, but clearly, you know, we have to come back with a site plan, we have to meet all the city's requirements. This is not going to be a zero-lot line development.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Harwitz.
In your staff analysis, you mentioned certain policies, but you totally bypassed the policies 1.1.2, 1.12.6, 1.12.7, where you have a requirement to create a buffer zone between high density and lesser density. And I drove through the area today, and yes, 6th Avenue is a mess, and part of the mess is that when those buildings were thrown up, there were no amenities for the kids that ended up in that housing. The kids had to find their recreation, hang around pinball machines at the 7-Eleven. So here we have a property that's, where you're putting this 200-unit-per-acre structure right up against single-family homes. We're not talking about replacing the four-story-bed apartment buildings, and these single-family homes are stable, and if you drive through that area, most of them are in pretty good shape, and people are taking care of them. So what do you have with relation to this site as a buffer to protect the integrity of the abutting single-family residential neighborhood?
If I could add to what Mr. Delagloria just said, at this stage, you're just asking for a use change, but what we'll have at the next change, at the next stage, at the site plan level, are requirements for open space, and I think that responds to your question. There's a 20% open space requirement, so it's not just completely concrete.
The reality of it tonight is the fact that the lots that we're looking at right now, bear in mind, it, that the map itself presents the fact that it almost looks like a zero lot with no buffer whatsoever.
Correct, correct.
And it being of an odd angle, where you have an offset in the size, plays into the point as to how we would want to vacate these properties and how it's going to affect our decision with the other items coming up.
Correct.
So I think it's very imperative that, as Ms. Harwitz is explaining, and what I'm questioning, is we do have to look at the future concepts in order to understand why they would need the offset of the vacancy of the alleyways and the property being offset in this diagram.
Correct.
So that all of a sudden, this map right now that we have to go by shows no buffer whatsoever.
Correct, correct.
That, well, I have a feeling, if I'm not correct, is weighing heavily on a lot of our minds right now, as a commission, to allow any sort of vacancy of these lots.
If I could respond to that, Mr. Ernst, I understand the concern that you're having. The boundary lines that you see are just the lot line for the entire development, and the request that's being made is only for the use change at this time. The concern that you have is a site plan issue in terms of the buffering, the transition languages that are built into the LDR that requires that there are certain setbacks that are created between the higher-density development that's being proposed and the existing low-density residential that's in the area. So what you can't see is the site plan phase, that's the next stage of this process. All we're discussing now are use changes. At the next level, then, staff is at the level where we review the actual site plans, we see the building footprint, we see the setbacks, we see the actual buffering, we see the open space of the 20% that's required. You're not site plan reviewing right now, and that's why you don't see those mitigation lines between the two.
On the other items, if we were to approve the vacation of those alleyways, that's a done deal. That can't be taken back, correct?
Correct, because it's just an abandonment of the right-of-way between the lots.
Right, again, it affects the overall footprint of, that's giving them more space, which they can then account for, for either, A, more development, or spreading out their development, or as what is kind of evident where we're going to, buffering that project.
Correct, correct.
This is what I think we want to try to establish with staff and with the developers, to understand where we're coming from, when we have to look at how we abandon these alleys.
Correct, and I think the initial question that Commissioner Harwitz asked, are there safeguards in place, and are there transition regulation that helps to protect the integrity of the existing low-density residential development that's right to the west of the subject site? And the response is, yes, there definitely are, in the NRO section, and I'm going to refer you to Section, subsection 5 of that same provision that's referenced in your staff report, 4-405D. Subsection 5 talks specifically about portions of a building above 35 feet shall be set back an additional one foot for every two feet of height above 35 feet. That was intentionally put within the Comprehensive Plan and the LDR for situations just like this, where you had new developments coming in adjacent to existing single-family developments. So at least there would be some cushioning and transition setback requirements placed there, so at least it wasn't overwhelming on the existing development. So that's why we had put this type of language in there, and one of the conditions you'll notice that, I noted on number 3, is that the applicant is required to submit a site plan, is required to go through the DRC process, and it's at that level that the city has the opportunity to tweak the actual site plan and ensure that they're meeting these requirements that are built in, the transition requirements that are built into the LDR.
My concern is that staff is boxing itself into a corner in terms of recommending expanding the NRO, transferring units in, and then giving the developer investment-backed expectations that they're going to get 200 units squeezed onto a lot, and then come back and say, well, we can't put them all in unless we go closer and get a variance, and you gave us the 200 units and we need our variance. And at the council level, you know, it's a very compelling kind of argument. So it's really important to address it at this point, because maybe we don't need to expand the NRO and transfer more units onto the site. Perhaps the problem of loading this site with 100 units per acre, when right now it's on 25, or whatever it is, is, creates a complexity for staff that will be difficult to extricate itself from.
And I understand that concern, however, the only request that's before is a use change. So at this stage, all there is is a transfer of the use from the medium-density to the high-density residential. What we have in the future, then, is looking at the actual use, looking at the development that's laid on top of it, and determining, do you meet those setbacks in order to achieve the units that you've requested? So it's not at the stage where they can even design a site plan if they really don't even have the use that they're proposing tonight. That's an impossibility to design something at high density when it's not even there. So it's really just the cart heading before the horse, for lack of a better expression. It's impossible to design that without having an approval of a small-scale amendment.
But you're saying that you have an approval of 200 units, and then they.
I'm absolutely not saying that. I'm saying the first stage in the process is to change the use, and then you look at the actual site plan that's overlaid on that use to determine if it fits the area. There's no way to design it, and the architect is here, so he can speak for his discipline, but there's no way to design a site where the use doesn't exist.
But I guess what, as Maureen was saying, we're boxing ourselves in by committing to a number. The number's been thrown out there that perhaps is not the desirable number of units in that small an area unless it becomes a giant footprint of a big massive building of some sort which would, you know, either, I don't, we're not getting into aesthetics, but I'm just saying, down the road, are we boxing ourselves in, like she says, with them being able to expand more than what might be desirable?
Well, I think Mr. Prevertel Loeb is ahead of you there.
It does seem like, and I echo the sentiments of the panel, that we're sort of being asked to have a great mass, not only on great mass of building, not only on Sixth Avenue, but intruding into, sort of penetrating into this lower-rise residential area where there's really singles, single-story, single-family homes. And it really protrudes in quite a ways, and it would be large, it would possibly devalue some of the buildings around it, and it would sort of overshadow the immediate buildings to the west. Is there a, and because of our, the type of zoning that we have here, everybody that's interested in developing is really, tries to fit in their density and their units, and they hit this ceiling and the height restriction, and therefore we have these, they start to spread out. They go up, and because they can't go any higher, they spread out. And then we have parking lots such, and we lose our, you know, it's like by design, we lose our open space even though 20% is required, but we start to lose that if it's eaten up by parking lots and stuff. And we don't have a situation where there's a, call it a floor-area ratio, an FAR, where you can say, I'll take this density and I'll use only half the lot, but I'll go twice as high. We don't have that. So in this case, the, I think everybody's concerned about this sort of intruding in at that compression, that compression aspect of trying to get the best value and payback on it, but it's going to push into the neighborhood. Without, without having a floor-area ratio and allowing it higher in one area and being able to shape this ourselves, would it be in the public interest for this alleyway, maybe not to be completely vacated, but possibly to be relocated and becomes a new buffer zone along the property line between lots two and three, and to go where lot one is, creating an immediate physical barrier as well as possibly encouraging a green strip there that if they do have to have 20% open space or so, that is encouraged to be at the west side of the development?
Mr. Prevertel, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. If you're talking about the alleyway that runs from 135th to 136th, which kind of like divides the property, that doesn't exist.
I know.
It just doesn't exist. Nobody looking at that property would think that there's anything there other than our land.
But if you're the owner of lot four, lot 10, when the new construction comes in, that will be very real to them. It'll be right up against their property line. And I'm saying, and I know that particularly this lot three, which protrudes further west than any of them, you would like to use that as part of your open-space calculation, if not your density calculation and such. And myself, if we were able to move the alleyway over, we might satisfy getting a bit of a barrier, and you'd still have lot three, and maybe it gets zoned high, but maybe it gets used as more of a public park, but you get to use that as part of your open space.
What would be the difference between an alleyway on the, I guess you're talking about the west side of the property, and are simply, and are simply dealing with that through landscaping, which would be much more effective?
Well, the alleyway would be, it'd really be a landscape, it'd be undeveloped, it'd be a green, a green man.
Of course. We are not standing here saying we want to have zero lot lines all over the place, not at all.
Well, I'm just wondering if it might give peace of mind to the panel and to the community to relocate that. They still have the large integral piece of property there, and it gives just a guarantee.
Mr. Prevertel, I'm sorry, can I add to that, just explain the dimension so at least you understand the context of what you're asking for? The setback requirement would be a 35-feet setback from the west boundary line. That's your setback requirement per the LDR. What you're suggesting, if you put the alleyway there, is only a 15-feet-wide alleyway. So it's actually smaller than what your code would allow as a setback distance between the two. So you get more bang for your buck also using them.
But then off the alleyway, they'd have the 35. I'm just saying it would provide a physical...
So you're suggesting in addition to the 35, 15-foot?
Yeah, it would provide a physical barrier. And then do you, on that 35-foot setback, do you allow parking back there, or is it a landscaped strip of 35 feet? Just throwing it out.
Now, but that lot 10 is an existing building. You couldn't put an alleyway there because there's an existing building on lot 10.
Well, no, no. No, it wouldn't take up lots 10 land, it would take up the land from lot 11, which they own.
But they're already giving you 35 feet.
Right, right.
So I, I mean, I would give, that's...
I was trying to echo your concerns of having more of a barrier because this comes out, this would help to set it back. It gives you a physical barrier that's city-owned, let's say. It doesn't have to be developed, it could be a natural strip, and it just would guarantee that, that being...
Perhaps...
And they'd have, they'd have a rectangular form to work with rather than a panhandle form.
Again, I'm sorry, perhaps you wait until we march in here with a site plan that has to go through staff, has to go through you, has to go through the council, and again, as staff has said, what you're doing right now is designing our building, and that's not, and that's not on the agenda tonight. You'll get a chance to do that.
I understand that. But with the other items coming up, they involve the vacation of what is known as alleyways that truly don't exist, I know what the property looks like. And the fact that, bear in mind also, we don't want to sit present in here.
I think you do.
Any developer that comes along...
No, I think that's exactly what you want to do. I think you want to take this site and absolutely make it something that you want to see happen in this city.
But not the vacation of every alleyway.
Of the non-existing alleyways. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Eich.
And can I, before you go, Mr. Eich, there was some concern, I think raised by Ms. Horowitz regarding amenities and, you know, what children and other things in the neighborhood. I would appreciate it if Ms. Roman could speak to that issue as to how that works into her other properties.
Thank you. Good evening. Paola Roman with Car Force Supportive Housing, 1398 Southwest First Street. To answer your question, everything that we design, we design as if we were going to live in them, including the apartment units and the amenities. Both of the buildings that you have are just an example of what Car Force has built over the last 20 years. We're celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. And they both have fully-equipped gym with brand-new equipment, they have libraries with computers for the residents to use, they have a computer lab, the library, they have a playground in the buildings as well. And what you will see also, we have built in the development on the 54th Street, on the eighth floor, there is a beautiful terrace with community space that we open up to different organizations from the community to come and use and serve not just the residents in the building, but people in the community. So it really is, our organization is a not-for-profit, mission-driven organization to serve the community. So in respect to your concerns about coming in and building something that would not be beneficial to the people who live in the neighborhood or to the people that are visiting the neighborhood, we are very sensitive to that, so we just wanted to make sure that you knew. I did bring packets to introduce you to our organization. If you Google our organization, you will see a lot more about it, but we are very sensitive to who the people are and what they need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eich?
Yes. Is your microphone on?
In the conception of the plan, I'm looking at this beautiful structure over here. What are we looking at as far as height?
On the top, you have what we call Villarora, and it's 12 stories tall. The bottom floor is the retail space that is for the Miami-Dade Hispanic Library. In between is the parking garage and the 76 units of apartments, one, two, three, and four bedrooms, because this is a family development. And on the 12th floor is Car Force corporate office. We have the development team as well as a property management organization and supportive services staff that are on-site five days a week to make sure that all of the residents receive any services that they might need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask staff a question? What is our height maximum like that?
For the lots that are inside of the NRO, they're allowed 90 feet as of right.
And that would be how many stories approximately?
About nine stories approximately, because you're thinking 10 stories per floor. For the lots that are outside of the NRO, that's 75 feet or a seven-story building.
How many?
Seven-story building, approximately. And that's as of right today, without this approval, they could build that.
I have to agree with Mr. Dela Gloria and the staff on this. I've seen Northeast Sixth Avenue just deteriorate over the years. I started here in 1970 as a police officer and subsequently ended up being the police chief. And Northeast Sixth Avenue is an absolute disgrace. And if we get a project like this in there to be the shining example of what we should be, then I'm all in favor of it. I've seen some of these projects as I go downtown to the VA, and I'm really impressed with it. You'll improve the quality of life, the appearance of the neighborhood, and maybe possibly we can get rid of some of those, those buildings over there that should be just knocked down. I mean, they are absolutely deplorable. When I was in the police department, I used to have a saying that there were two people that I despised, slum lords and dope dealers because they're both sellers of misery. And some of those apartments on Northeast Sixth Avenue are absolutely a disgrace. This program here and this project would be an absolute benefit to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Eich. And to respond to one other thing that I think Mr. Ernst said, I think that a project like this is going to do nothing but increase land value in that area.
What you had asked us before is, we're looking at change in the lot lines and so forth and so on. You're going to have to come before us again with the, with the, right now we're talking about a basic conception, but you're going to have to come before us again with the actual setbacks and so forth and so on. And I do believe in the land use right now, there are numerous restrictions to maintain the quality of life of the residential area that surrounds it. But I'll tell you one thing that would improve the quality of life of the residential area around it, is getting rid of some of those despicable buildings that we have on Sixth Avenue and putting up a project like this. That would certainly enhance the property value and the quality of life of the people living there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eich.
I don't think anybody's challenging the idea of redeveloping or of this site. I think it's just the nature of how it affects the western side and that residential neighborhood. I think everybody's for, you know, responsible civic-minded development, and I think it's just making that transition that's a little bit harder to swallow.
When we, when we come in with a site plan, I'm sure that that will be a concern you will raise, and to make sure that your concerns are satisfied, we understand exactly where the board is coming from on that issue. I don't think it's escaped anybody's attention as to what you want to see on the west side of that property, and that's what we're going to be walking in with.
And just to reiterate what I was saying before, and just to clarify, if by chance the panel wanted to make a motion to move that alley over, it would not affect the square footage that you've already invested in? Basically, it's, and you would make it contiguous, it actually would increase the value of them, and it would sort of guarantee a buffer zone for that neighborhood in return for having this larger, possibly overwhelming development. And you would still get the central, the east-west alleyway would be taken over by the group, and you'd have a larger rectangular, very usable parcel. The panhandle would have to be considered. I mean, if there was open space, that might be a great place for it rather than having high-rise sticking out into this panhandle to the west. So that's, that's just a thought. It's just, we'd have that peace of mind of having that strip in there as well as the setback. In the setback, if I understand properly, they could have surface parking or other things. Doesn't guarantee that the setback of 35 feet is going to have, be lush with greenery and such.
No, they can't have parking within the 35 feet. You can't. It's just open space or landscaping. And that's intentional because you're trying to soften the interaction between the high-density and the low-density development. The meeting of the two needs to be softened by landscaping.
And on the rest of the site, to the north, south, and to the east of the site, what would the setback be? North, south, and east, if any?
I don't have that here.
Maybe the, maybe the development crew knows? Because if there is a setback, that may start to take up some of that, some of that required open space, and therefore there's nothing left for the buffer zone on the west side.
On the front end of the side, it's 25, and on the side, it's 7.5. So depending on which angle they orient the building, if it's oriented towards six, then six becomes the front, if they're oriented towards 135th Street, then that becomes the front.
That's interesting also. I just assumed the front would be on Sixth Avenue.
So they have the benefit of being on two fronts.
Right, right.
They're in a corner.
But that shows a covered sidewalk. Would that be a component of the design perhaps? I mean, I have no objection to it, but how would that play into our guidelines for setback if they chose to want to use a covered sidewalk?
The example, appear, at least from this photo, appears not to have any open space down below, or at least any green space.
It's covered sidewalks, correct? Is that right?
And does that count as open space?
Tony Reagan. The building on the bottom toward the back in that buffer zone that would be similar to what you're speaking about now, we've got a large playground area, and that's where the buffer zone is.
I was referring to the front. Yeah, we were just discussing the front portion.
In the, in the front, the sidewalk is not covered. From our property line back, we actually have what we call a colonnade, and it's a covered walkway around the facility.
All right, okay.
We should also point out for the record that that building was built in the City of Miami under entirely different set of land use regulations.
So the setback that you just mentioned, the seven feet or seven and a half feet and an additional amount, that could actually, that's around the perimeter, and that could account for some of that 20% open space.
Correct.
So that goes back to the concern that once they're required to do that, then it's very tempting to say, well, hey, there's my 20% open space, I've now used it at the perimeter, I'm going to build as close as power, as dense as possible to the western side. It's not assuring this buffer zone because it's not like, hey, that full 20% is going to be on the west. No, I wouldn't be surprised if 50 and 20% gets used up along the perimeter. Therefore, do we, do we try to devise something there to assure?
But you don't do that at this point. There are four items in front of you, none of which are the approval of a site plan.
Those conditions, well, okay, those conditions that you're attempting to provide at this stage are applicable at a more appropriate stage, which is the, when they come back...
Not really. What he's saying is, you're asking us tonight for one of those four items, which is abandonment of an alleyway. Whether it exists in reality, or it's just, you know, it's been dedicated in the past, doesn't have a paved area, but it's a dedicated land that belongs to the public.
Yes.
And what my colleague is saying is that we shouldn't be relinquishing a dedicated area that belongs to the public. We should lock it in on the west side of the boundary of the property to protect the single-family neighborhood, and that's a perfectly valid issue for one of these four items.
And it still would complement the main development. It's not going to be a...
I'll ask your city attorney to answer that.
I'm sure we would approve the abandonment of the non-existent alleyway that's on the map that shows it as an alleyway, because that's going to take it over to lots 12 and one. But what you're, what you're gaining with that is, I guess we're looking for, okay, so we abandoned that property, which is city, let's use that for buffer, buffer percentage on the other side of those lots.
First of all, it doesn't exist. Second of all, we have to pay for that. The city has an ordinance in place which requires us to pay for the land we're taking. And by the way, what we've agreed to on this site is a cutout, we've already entered into easement agreements with the city regarding a cutout for a bus. We've given the city an easement to put a sign on that property recognizing where City Hall and Moca is. Okay, we're not standing here saying, okay, we want to grab everything we can get, and we haven't done anything on behalf of the city. It was the city who came to us and asked us for some of our land. And when the city manager wants to sit down with me and talk about how much we're going to pay, I'm going to remind him how much of our land he took.
That, if I may say, the strip in the middle of a property, almost any property, is worth a significantly larger amount than what will, it'll be assessed at on a is worth a significantly larger amount than what will, it'll be assessed at on a square foot basis. If that same strip was on the side, you know, if you have that central portion of the property, it's much easier to do your construction rather than having all those additional walls and three separate buildings.
But we're not negotiating the price with you this evening.
No, no, and it's, the price will be very minimal. I think it's that it represents something that is a public amenity and the possibility to just sort of relocate it to retain a buffer zone. It really is, it may not be a hundred percent of what you want, but it is somewhat of a win-win situation. You get a large contiguous parcel. You don't have to pay for that, it just gets relocated. It's not where you, you did invest in the other lots such, but you'll pick up that space as lot one moves over, as lot twelve moves over. It's really a bit of a win-win, and it gives us the assurance that there's at least that buffer, if not more.
If this is a conversation you want to hold with us when the item is before you, we'll do that. But right now, this item is not in front of you. Right now, you're on item one.
Wait a minute. We may make a recommendation, we're merely an advisory board.
Exactly.
That to the city that, don't sell the easement. Relocate the easement. That could, you know, it's appropriate for us to discuss it. Don't tell us we can't discuss it.
You can discuss it all you want.
Thank you.
You can't make us have a condition tonight.
No, we're not asking for a condition. I think what you're.
That's exactly what you're doing.
Why?
No, we're an advisory board, John, you know that.
What do you think you're doing? You have a board member who wants us to have now, in addition to a twenty-five-foot buffer, he wants to add another buffer on top of that. We're not going to do it. We're certainly not going to do it tonight.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we're basically looking at a conceptual plan here, and how can you put the cart before the horse?
Right.
We don't know what we're going to see until we see it.
Exactly.
And I think, you know, these are very good points to bring up, but not at this time, at another, at another meeting, when we look at the actual site plan. What we're asking for, and I got to tell you, I don't mean to be redundant or steal the mic here, but I said previously, this is the right thing at the right time, in the right place, in the right neighborhood. And, you know, we're going to have our safeguards. Our safeguards are there in the land use program on the setback, whether we move the alley today, tomorrow, or next, you know, it doesn't, I understand where you're coming from, but it's a moot issue tonight.
All right.
If it's a moot issue, why are we discussing it?
All right. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing and listen to any members of the public that may wish to address this issue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kevin Burns, 2065 Alamanda Drive in North Miami. It's interesting that when I was the previous mayor of the city, we took about a year or year and a half to develop these land development regulations. We had numerous city meetings, we had numerous homeowners' meetings. I've had, I had some knockout-down arguments with some of my dear friends over height and density, and what should be allowed and shouldn't be allowed, and we came to a consensus, and a pretty good consensus. And everybody thought the floodgates were going to come rushing down, that we're going to turn into Brickell Avenue right away. If that's the biggest problem this town had, I could deal with that. But it's not. And so we spent a year and a half coming up with a lot of these recommendations, a lot of the stuff that you're going to be discussing tonight, everything from vacating alleys and charging the people when you vacate an alley instead of giving it away, the density, the transit-oriented bonuses. We went over it so many times, and it had appeared before the planning commission, and it went to numerous other groups to say, this is what modern buildings are today. It might not be something we personally like, but it is, land is so expensive, development cost is so expensive, that it is more of an urban look, more density, and closer to the road, and that's the way things are being built. Look at Midtown Miami. Look at Hollywood. Look at Hollywood Boulevard. Look at any area that's building, this is the type of designs that are being done. City of Miami, the buildings are there. They just did the Miami Twenty-One, the good and bad of it. As you consider this tonight, because I know some of you were heavily involved in, when we were talking about these regulations, some of you own property, and you know the frustration of not being able to use your property to the highest and best use. We all know this corner. Since I was a kid, riding my bicycle on that field, nothing had ever been there, and everything for the last thirty-five, since I'm only thirty-five years old, last thirty-five years that has tried to go on there has been turned down. I think the applet has acquired additional property, and so the, it's a sorely needed building, the housing, and so forth. Let's not get caught up tonight on the particulars of a particular site plan, but the overall concept. Does it work? Will it work? Can the staff work with the developer as the project moves along? But tonight, I think it's just some questions. If you don't vacate an alley, you might stop it. If you don't grant the extra units, it may stop it. There's, so we're saying conceptually, we're okay with it, but when it comes site plan time, we want you to do this, we want you to do that. But I think this is something that the community worked on. These land regulations aren't something that we just came up with tonight. They have been on the books for several years, and the economy never lent itself for anybody to come forward. Finally, and from my understanding, this is the first project coming forward to North Miami that actually wants to build new residential units and using some of these banked units that we had sitting there. And, Mr. Chairman, I won't talk on every four of the issues, so thank you for giving me a little leeway here on my three minutes, but keep an open mind tonight. I don't know the developer who's going to build this, but I know their reputation, they do a good job, and I think that this could be the catalyst. You know, we keep talking about Sixth Avenue, we keep talking about Sixth Avenue. Well, until somebody puts their money where their mouth is and starts spending millions of dollars, nothing's going to happen on Sixth Avenue. And I think this is, could be the good start, because I know many of us have spoken that, boy, we'd love to have some of these old buildings, obsolete buildings on Sixth Avenue torn down and something new. You've got something new, you've got modern standards of what people are buying, what the market will bear, and that's how we should move forward. Go to downtown Fort Lauderdale, you see these type of developments all over their CRA districts, all over La Solis, all over by Andrews Avenue, just north of Sunrise, I mean Hollywood, I mean, Bard Boulevard. You'll see this type of thing. And I think the fact that somebody's going to come and spend some money in North Miami, I think tonight we could move forward with some of the conceptual recommendation. Again, if they don't get the money, if they don't get a lot of things, a lot of things can derail this. But we have fears, but we can overcome those fears, they can work with the staff, and let's not be the city of no, let's see if we can be the city of progress. And I would surely like to see a nice, brand-new building with that seniors and vets and some of these other individuals that they're going to house there, have this housing opportunity for, be there, the retail in that neighborhood. I think it's a win-win, and again, it's what we worked a year and a half on, three years ago, all these land development regulations, to look for. And finally, we have something coming tonight. Thank you very much, and hopefully you'll give them the benefit of the doubt tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
Paula Roman, City of North Miami resident, 110 Northeast, 131st Street. I actually shop right down the street from Sixth Avenue at that Publix. Grew up and went to W.J. Bryan Elementary here, so I've been here for a while, and I would love nothing more than to see some of those, this development really spark something to the surrounding neighborhood. Having done my groceries at Publix one day with my husband, there was a young, single mom in front of us, and I tell you this story because it's very relevant. We paid for her groceries, and on our way out, she was trying to figure out how to get her groceries home because she was walking home with her young daughter. We drove her and her daughter to her apartment right on Sixth Avenue, and to not make her feel uncomfortable, my husband waited outside in the parking lot, and I walked with her. If I were a fearful woman, I would have been afraid as I entered into that area where she lived. I would love to see, as a North Miami resident, this area developed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Last call. No one else is rising, therefore, the public hearing is closed. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, we've heard the arguments for and against. The issue here is to expand the NRO. The chair calls for a motion.
Is there more discussion after the public hearing?
Do you wish to discuss it further?
Yes, I've just.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Pravatel. Do we need to move the issue?
I don't think anybody is challenging going ahead, and everybody wants this. It's just the nature. It's a case where we're agreeing to combine the lots, so you have your cake, and you're getting the higher density, you're getting the bonuses, so you're eating it too. And the trouble is that by taking the alleyway, you're eating somebody else's cake as well. I've got mine, I've got more, I want somebody else's. It reminds me of some political parties and such, that, you know, we're just calling for this as a, some peace of mind of a relocation, potential relocation, so that the public interest is maintained, and that, yes, could it be yielded later on? Yes. If we yield it now, it's no returning, it's gone, and we have to deal with that. To say that, oh, yes, we need redeveloping the area, we're agreeing with that. And whether the alley gets moved a little bit, we're just talking about a fifteen-foot alleyway, that's not going to make or break this project, but it may help that neighborhood. It may help also the project itself by having this buffer zone to the west side. It's just a matter of a little bit of security, a little bit of peace of mind for our side and for that community, because as was pointed out, I think if this was advertised a little bit in a more pronounced fashion, I think we'd have more dissenting concerns regarding this. And we're just trying to stand up for that public interest. We do want the project, we do want it to be successful and be as good as it can be, but we're also trying to provide a little bit of peace of mind, as I've said. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
May I also add to the comment? Being in favor of this development, all we were trying to do is to gain a little bit of transparency among all of us as to how this was going to lay it out. Because in all fairness, we got to pack it, we don't get to see the pictures, we don't get to hear the developer when we're looking at this before we come into this meeting hall. So we cherish the chance that we have to be able to debate this among ourselves. With all respect, please, we, that's all we are trying to do is to get answers, not to argue with you, but to get answers as to how this whole development will be beneficial to the city, and that we make the right decision, and that everybody's clear and consent with what we have to send to the city council. That's all. It's not that we're standing here objecting to it. We are going to ask questions, and Mr. Dela Gloria's been sitting at that table when I've been on the commission, he knows that we ask hard questions and we drive them crazy, but I think it's necessary that everybody understands exactly how this development will progress in the days ahead. So that is why you got some of the questions, not because we were trying to be antagonistic, but we needed to get a lot of things clear and understand how this project will progress. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I add just one?
Just go ahead, and let's get this question moved.
I just want to add, while I'm in favor of the project, only concern that I've had was the residential properties, you know, to see how the value will be affected. That's my major concern.
All right. With that said, gentlemen, let's move the question. It's before us to expand the NRO. Motion on the floor, please. All right, Kenny Eich moves for approval. Do we have a second?
What are we approving right now?
Just to remind the chair, it's a request for a land use change from medium to high-density residential in addition to expanding the boundary of the NRO. So I want to make sure the language is on the record.
All right. All right, we've got a motion in favor. Mr. Eich, do we have a second? Chair calls for a second. If there's no second, the motion will die.
Move the second up.
All right, Mr. Ernst moves for a second. Is there any final discussion?
Are we voting on changing the zoning and, secondly, expanding the NRO boundaries?
No, we're changing on amending the land use, and we're also expanding the western version of, the western boundary of the NRO to include the five lots that were discussed.
That's what I asked. Are we doing two things?
It's not the zoning. I just want to make sure we understand.
It's two things.
Yes, but I want to clarify, you said zoning, the next item is zoning.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to make sure the record is clear.
But it's two actions.
Correct. So it's land use and boundary.
I really wish that you could break this into two parts. Start with a resolution on the R six, and then a second resolution, do we wish to expand the NRO? Because they are two separate items.
The R six is not before us, Ms. Commissioner, just the land use. It's the high-density residential and the medium-density.
Not the expanding the NRO boundary?
Correct, that is before you, but we don't want to get the mix up because the next item is about the zoning. We have a land use layer and we have a zoning layer. The item that's up for consideration right now is just the land use layer. So the amendment is that the M, the medium-density residential land use be changed to high-density residential as well as expanding the boundaries of the NRO to include the five lots.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why can't that be two separate items?
It's one separate item because it's one land use issue. You have a future land use map, and on the future land use map, you have the high-density residential as well as the NRO boundary. So you're amending the map. You're amending one map.
Ken, may I ask you a question?
Correct. Go ahead.
Is it possible to vote on two separate ways? Number one, do we wish it to go to R six? Number two, do we wish this R six to be part of the NRO?
I mean, this is how it was presented, and this is the one resolution covering both subjects.
Yes, but I'm asking you, can we spread it up?
I guess you can, you can spread it up.
Yes.
But I don't, it's going to be one land use amendment, it's going to be one amendment, and this is what it is.
Yeah, but it could be two, couldn't it not? It could not be, it could be two amendments. Because suppose we like R six, but we don't wish the NRO to be expanded?
It's not R six.
High-density.
It's a high-density.
It is at the present time.
I'm asking you a legal issue, and I'm not arguing.
No, no, it's going to be one single, one lap amendment, it's going to be a single amendment to the future land use map.
Legally, can it be done as two?
I'm not going to, you know, entertain that. I think.
I'm asking you as the lawyer.
I think that the proper, the proper way of doing this is voting as presented. That's my opinion.
All right, we have the item on the floor, we have a motion to support this. Do we have a second? Again, if we do not have a second, it doesn't go forward. Mr. Ernst has made his second, all right. Is there any further discussion on the item as presented? If not, the chair will call for a vote. Yes? Mr. Castor?
Yes.
Mr. Ernst?
Yes.
Ms. Horowitz?
No.
Mr. Pravatel?
I'm going to go yes at the moment. Yeah, I'm still concerned about the alley.
All right, five to one, motion carries. Thank you. That's the end of item one. Now we go to PCO three dash thirteen. I'm sure we're citing the right one. Two, yep, PCO three dash thirteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending the City of North Miami official zoning map referenced in Article One, Section one dash one zero six to reflect the rezoning of an area consisting of eight contiguous lots located on the northwest quadrant of northeast one hundred and thirty-fifth Street and northeast Sixth Avenue totaling approximately two-point-one acres in size and generally identified as lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve, currently zoned R five, and lots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen currently zoned R four of Block One Smallwood Manor subdivision from the current R four and R five multifamily residential designation to an R six multifamily residential designation, and to further expand the neighborhood redevelopment overlay, NRO district boundary depicted on the official zoning map to include the subject lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve, in order to allow for the future redevelopment of the vacant site consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami comprehensive plan, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff is requesting that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to rezon the subject site located on the northwest quadrant of northeast one thirty-fifth Street and northeast Sixth Avenue from R four and R five to R six zoning as well as expand the western boundary of the NRO district to include lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve. twelve. And if I could differentiate for the Board, what you just discussed in the previous item was the amendment of the city's future land use map. The item that's before you is a request to amend the city's zoning map. So it's essentially the same project. You're looking at the same lots, but you're amending two different maps. The request before you is being determined because the site currently has a split zone with lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve being zoned R five multifamily residential with a density of 16.3 dwelling units per acre. And the remaining lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen are zoned R four multifamily residential with a density of 12 dwelling units per acre. And the request, if approved, would allow the entire site to be zoned R six, so there would be one homogeneous zoning across the entire development. As before in the previous discussion, staff had to look at the analysis and ensure that it was consistent with the city's LDR requirements in Section three dash one zero zero three. And staff found that it met the requirements of the LDR in terms of the criteria. And I'm going to read into the record or recommendation for approval the conditions that are included. And it's essentially the same conditions that were included on the amendment of the future land use map in the prior item that was discussed. For the rezoning recommendation, to rezon the lots from R four and R five to R six, staff is recommending approval with the following condition: that the applicant consolidate all eight lots as well as any abandoned alleyways in the proposed development through a waiver of plat; that the applicant furnishes a copy of the recorded document to Director of Community Planning and Development once the instrument has been recorded with the county; that the applicant is required to obtain a site plan review and approval for the proposed new development prior to obtaining final building permits. As such, the applicant shall contact the city's zoning administrator in order to obtain submitted instructions and subsequently file a site plan application. And the third condition is that the applicant comply with the conditions listed in Exhibit one of the approved conditional use permit. Staff is concluding the presentation at this time. If the agent for the applicant wishes to add comments at this time.
Do you want me to reintroduce myself?
For the record, because it is another resolution. Yes, John?
Okay. John DeLaGloria. My office is at nine one five five, South Dade Lane Boulevard, Suite 1014 in Miami. First of all, let me say thank you for the prior vote. Second, I did not mean to be argumentative. Mr. Prevattel will have every opportunity to bash our head in when we get to the fourth item. That's, I'm just, you know what I'm saying. Okay.
If I may clarify my cake comment, I mentioned politics. It should be general politics. I didn't mean in particular to take out anybody in particular.
I'm sure we all voted for Obama, as we should have. Now, as Steph has just told you, this is essentially the zoning thing that you just did from the comp plan thing. It's putting into effect the zoning, which has to, of course, be consistent with your comp plan. So that's why they did the comp plan first. And now this zoning request is essentially identical to that. So, you could, if you want, to even incorporate your prior discussion into this discussion. But unless you have a question, I'll sit back down.
All right. Thank you very much, John. At this time, is there any council discussion on this issue?
I make a motion that we approve the R six portion of the zoning resolution, but do not expand the NRO over the area at this time.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the R six.
I'll second that.
But not to expand the NRO. We have, that motion is made by Ms. Horowitz. We have a second on the floor by Mr. Prevattel. Do we have discussion on this? Mr. Eich, to bring you up to speed here. Ms. Horowitz, on the second item, has moved to approve the R six zoning, but to not expand the NRO. Mr. Prevattel has seconded that motion. We are now at the point of council discussion, but of course, you know, before we get to that, we have to open the public hearing. Yes. So before we can move that item forward, we still need to go back and open the public hearing again on this and see if anyone wants to speak to the zoning issue. So, the public hearing is open. Anyone wanting to speak to this?
I do.
Nice. Hear no thunder and heard and see no rising cloud of dust, and so it appears no one wishes to speak to the zoning issue. Therefore, the public hearing is closed. Now back to your motion and second. We're now ready for council discussion on this point. Would you care to elaborate on your logic here?
The NRO, the theory behind the NRO is to encourage the groundhound redevelopment and to provide opportunities to basically goose density in areas where people can easily walk into centers like Mocha and community centers and all of that, and then where it makes sense to have congregations of people like on Brickell downtown areas. This is, and the NRO is fairly large. By expanding the NRO into this area of the single-family neighborhoods, you're basically skewing the focus on a downtown redevelopment. And I think that to have a 200-unit-per-acre density right next to single-family homes with a 110-foot-high building is like a foam sticking up. You don't have anything anywhere in this area more than four stories in height. Not anything. And it's going to loom over this community. And they're going to have to go up if you're going to make an NRO and you're going to transfer density in. So I think it's just, it's going to look bad. I don't think it's going to work right. And that's my reason for not wanting to see the NRO stretched out. Let the NRO stay where it's supposed to be and let the density go where all the amenities are and where the library is and where the downtown area is, where people can walk in and bike around the places.
Mr. Prevattel, do you have comments on your position? I support your position. All right.
If I may just add something to this. You're in conflict with the future land use map that you just approved.
Correct.
By doing this. I'm just going to let, put that out on the table. You approved the future land use, the increment of the NRO by these same lots, and now you're saying no.
Mr. Chairman.
So, there's a conflict you're creating.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eich?
It doesn't make any sense. I mean, we just approved something and we're going to go against what we just approved. One of the reasons, in my estimation, that we're in this position today in the city is because we didn't build anything higher than four stories. We said we wanted to keep it a bedroom community. And this was 30 years ago. Well, we did keep it a bedroom community. I remember the home was sleeping under one hundred and thirty-first Street on 95. It's time for a new day in a new way, and this is the proper way to develop the city. I mean, we look at one hundred and twenty-fifth Street, it's an absolute disgrace down there also. I had no problem with this. This is the right way to do it. I'm going to vote against the.
Again, Mr. Eich, I do live near one hundred and twenty-fifth Street. I agree with you in part with what you're saying, but one hundred and twenty-fifth Street along Breeze West area is not a disgrace.
Not that, I'm talking about downtown. Let me clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
We do have to be careful the way.
Let me clarify. When I come over the tracks at Fourteenth Avenue, excuse me, Mr. Prevattel. When I come over the tracks at Fourteenth Avenue and I see some of the stuff that's there that should be ripped down, should have been ripped down 20, 25 years ago, it's absolutely disgraceful. And I'm embarrassed to say that this is my city. I wasn't pertaining to your residential area in Breeze West, not talking about the commercial area.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. The Chair at this time, we'll chime in a little bit. The Chair respects the feeling of Ms. Horowitz and Mr. Prevattel. I find you both to be very distinguished members of this Planning Commission, and I deeply respect your personal position on this. However, the Chair looks at this in terms of where we will be in 20 and 30 years, not where we've been in 20 or 30 years going back. I think the transition is reasonable. I would support the expansion of the NRO, and I would be inclined to vote against the motion that's been made.
Clarification, please? This is the component that has vacating the alleyway.
I understand that.
Is it?
Mr. Prevattel, if I could just add some technical clarification. Your future land use map is your guiding document for the city. The zoning map implements the future land use map division. So essentially, what you just did in your previous approval, you extended the boundary of the NRO to include all eight lots. Now, you've given the guiding principle that the NRO boundary is on the western side of the five lots. Essentially, if you support the recent recommendation to keep that NRO boundary only at the three lots, you've created an unintended conflict between your zoning map and your future land use map. The two boundaries have to be almost identical in symmetry.
I appreciate that.
And it's unintended, but I want to clarify technically that.
I appreciate that. But is this also the point where we're voting for vacating the alleyway?
No, that's your fourth item.
That's the last item on the agenda.
Yeah, you're not there yet.
It was mentioned.
It's the last item on the agenda.
Okay, so we still have that?
Yeah.
Correct.
We still have that, okay.
Correct. These are just map amendments. You just did it for the future land use map to extend the boundary. Now you're doing it for the zoning map. Identical, but it's a different map.
Okay.
The implementation map, I want to emphasize.
All right. We have a motion and a second, which would put us in conflict. The Chair has made his position clear. He's in opposition to the motion. And unless there's any other comment, it's time to put this one to a vote.
Call the question?
Call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
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 No? For Mr. Castor?
No.
No?
No.
All right. And no to myself. That motion fails. All right. The Chair will now call for a new motion in support of the recommendations of staff.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Chair will call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Aye?
No.
Four to two, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. PCO four dash thirteen, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, authorizing approval of the conditional use permit and substantially the attached form, transferring 138 bonus units from the neighborhood redevelopment overlay, NRO district, primary residential pool of 2,200 floating residential units, and further approve a bonus height of 35 feet for a proposed development generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of northeast one hundred thirty-fifth Street and northeast Sixth Avenue situated within the NRO district in accordance with Article four, Section four dash four oh five of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff requests that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed resolution and conditional use permit, requesting a transfer of 138 bonus units from the neighborhood redevelopment overlay district primary residential pool of 2,200 floating residential units, and further approve a bonus height of 35 feet for the proposed development located on the northwest quadrant of northeast one thirty-fifth Street and northeast Sixth Avenue, and forward said conditional use permit to City Council for final consideration. Just to provide some background on the process that we're undertaking right now with the pools, Policy 1.12.1 of the Comprehensive Plan established a primary pool of 5,000 floating residential units to encourage redevelopment in designated areas of the city. And as such, the primary pool consists of 2,200 floating residential units that have been set aside for use within the neighborhood redevelopment overlay district, 1,800 floating residential units for the central city district, and a secondary pool of 1,000 floating residential units for development outside the NRO district. To that end, Section four dash four oh five of the LDR further provides a height bonus of an additional 35 feet for future developments within the NRO subject to the requirements of Section four dash four oh five of the LDR. Additionally, in Section four dash two oh four of the city's land development regulation, it provides that requests for residential density bonuses may be granted through a conditional use permit approval by City Council in accordance with Section three dash four oh one and four dash four oh five of the LDR. Many of you may recall that when the Comprehensive Plan was updated back in 2007, the city had established a pool of 5,000 units, and that was specifically to encourage redevelopment for areas within the NRO. This really is our first application ever since that approval and the adoption of a Comprehensive Plan that request is being made. And per the code, it has to be made through the form of a conditional use permit, which is before you, that's subject to the discretion of the council to allot those units. So the request essentially is to be able to transfer 138 of those 5,000 units from the pool or the pot of the NRO and apply it to this development. So based on staff's analysis, staff does believe that applicant has met the requirements in order to achieve the 138 units. As a part of your packet, we've also included a copy of the conditional use permit, and I want to draw your attention to that because built within that are the conditions really for this development. In them achieving the 138 units, the city does require that certain amenities and certain elements be incorporated into the project in order to earn those 138 units. So if you're referring to Exhibit one, the heading says conditional use permit for Constoga Holdings. The first condition says approval is subject to the formal adoption and approval of the associated rezoning and future land use amendments, which were the previous approval. It's going to be to the back of your packet after the resolution.
Where are you?
It's this document that says Exhibit one, and it's your actual conditional use permit of what you're considering.
It's following.
The permit doesn't have a page.
It's following the resolution, the last page of the resolution.
Because it's an exhibit, it doesn't have a page.
Exhibit one.
Yeah, so go past the resolution, and then you should see something that's titled Exhibit one.
Okay.
And it looks like a resol, so you might miss it, but it's actually the permit itself.
Okay.
Are we there?
Exhibit one, yeah.
It's Exhibit one.
Okay. Wonderful. The first condition on your permit says approval is subject to the formal adoption and approval of associated rezoning and future land use amendments, which we just discussed, the first two items. And number two says that the applicant submits final precise plans and applicable landscape plans to the city's Community Planning and Development Department.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Constoga Holdings. Where were you?
You're at the right, you're at the right document. If you go down to number two, I'm reading the conditions into the record.
Oh, okay.
So they're requesting 138 units. The LDR requires that they have to be able to achieve the 138 based on certain conditions, and I'm reading the conditions into the record. Number three says that the applicant shall file an application for a waiver of plat with the Community Planning and Development Department to unify the eight lots and to vacate and abandon the alleyways into one consolidated parcel. Number four says that the applicant shall provide registration receipt from the United States Green Building Council showing intent to achieve LEED Silver Designation prior to council consideration. One of the proposals is that the building be constructed to LEED or some other acceptable green standard, so it has to be sustainable, saving in energy, water, and other conservation measures to ensure that it meets the city's guideline, that it be a green development. The applicant shall provide a copy of the LEED Silver Certification from USGBC to validate proposed green elements of development prior to obtaining final certificate of occupancy. Number six says that the applicant shall record a restrictive covenant against the property for the purpose of maintaining the affordable workforce housing for a term not less than 20 years. The applicant shall also give first preference to North Miami residents by selecting clients from the city's Housing Division Current Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that's the NSB rental waiting list. No less than 25% of the units, or total of 48 units, must be set aside for workforce housing. One of the requests that the city is making, I know the recommendation from the applicant was to have an affordable housing development, and the city is requesting that at least 25% of those units be set aside for workforce housing. Number seven says comply with all other city or county regulations as it relates to the zoning, parking, landscaping, school concurrency, and utilities. And then under number eight, you'll see the justification for the density bonuses that are being requested at this time. Staff will conclude the presentation and turn it over to the agent for the applicant who wishes to add further detail to the request.
Question to staff, my question. Can you, can you tell us how you based your percentage numbers on this with regards to the unit and the percentage? Is that a guideline set by, by staff arbitrarily, or is that a guideline set by?
Oh, not at all. The code, no, the code is very specific in section four dash four oh five for the requirements within the neighborhood redevelopment overlay district. It allows a bonus of ninety dwelling units per acre. And in order to achieve the ninety dwelling units per acre, the applicant must be able to satisfy the elements that are listed in number eight. They have to be transit, they have to be green, and in this case, they're proposing workforce housing. So it's somewhat of an à la carte list where they're listing all the elements of the development that they will be proposing, and their points associated with those features. So based on the points that they've been able to achieve, the ninety dwelling units per acre and the two point one two acre size property allows them to be, they have a possibility of developing one hundred and ninety-one units. So there, as of right, are fifty-three units. Right now, today, without any of these processes or discussion, they can build fifty-three units. So they're asking, can we then request thirty-eight bonus units from that pool of five thousand in order to achieve the one hundred and ninety-one units in entirety? And what you see in the table is the, are the elements that allow them to be able to achieve that with the transit, the green, and the workforce housing.
May I ask you a question? If they set aside twenty-five percent for workforce housing and then qualify for twenty additional development units, how is, suppose there are not twenty-five percent of the units occupied by workforce housing, how does that work? If they don't comply, if they don't fulfill?
They couldn't get the twenty. The only way they could achieve the twenty is if they satisfied the twenty-five.
Well, how do they know before they design that they have the density units that they need? Suppose they want to build a building with two hundred units, and they're counting on forty units coming from workforce housing, and when they build, they don't have forty apartments with workforce housing in it?
They have to. They can't get, they can't get a building permit issued without this permit, the conditional use permit being satisfied. It can't be built unless this conditional use permit is satisfied.
Unless they have solid signed contracts?
Correct. Correct.
So they can't design it unless they have the contracts either?
I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't say that. But you're not at the stage that you're designing development once again. You're at the stage where they're requesting pools of units from the city's total pool of five thousand units.
The pool is a first-come, first-served.
Correct. Once the five thousand are depleted, then the city can't allocate any additional bonus units. And none have been requested since the inception, since it was established back in two thousand and seven. We haven't had any applications, in part due to the fact that the economy went to a crashing halt, and at this point, we're starting to see more redevelopment coming forward, and this is a first of its kind since two thousand and seven for the request of the pool.
Tonya, refresh my memory. Was this panel a part of the creation? I think we had.
Oh, absolutely. The comprehensive plan was reviewed by the planning commission.
We met on this at T. Gwen Margolis extensively on this.
Correct. We had several hearings on the pool. This is not the first. Oh, absolutely. This board reviewed it on several cycles of the comprehensive plan draft that was brought before you. It's old because we've never had a request from the pool, but it's, it's not a new request.
Five years ago is a long time, and I don't remember how those numbers came about. That's why I needed to.
I think one of the conditions on those numbers was the amount of future water available from water and sewer. And that's what governed the extent, the maximum number of units that could be built in.
Correct.
We can't go beyond that because the water and sewer can't handle more than that.
The level of service has to be, as a point of water, Mr. Chair, if anyone wishes to speak this evening on this item, this, this item is quasi-jurisdictional. So anyone desiring to speak other than council, please stand and raise your right hand, anyone. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You don't have to do that. Thank you. You may be seated.
All right. Thanks very much. At this time, Mr. Dela Gloria?
My name is John Dela Gloria. My address is nine one five five South Dade Lane Boulevard, suite ten fourteen, Miami. And I think I've been consistent throughout in announcing that. The staff has put together in its, after its recommendation, about ten specific items that they checked that had to be satisfied for them to make a positive recommendation. I would just like to point out a couple. Number five on page three of the staff's report said that staff believes the proposed mixed-use development will greatly complement the surrounding neighborhood as it offers a mixture of residential, retail, and community facilities in an area lacking in new residential facilities for low- to moderate-income families, namely the elderly, who often have difficulties finding quality housing within the city. Additionally, per provision of your land development regulations, which is your zoning code, the site is subject to certain development restrictions governing the building, scale, setback, and parking to ensure compatible transition. And number seven, which again goes to a question that was raised, I believe, by Mr. Ernst, the proposed development will make way for the first major redevelopment project to occur along the northeast Sixth Avenue in many years. As proposed, it is anticipated to greatly improve the image of the corridor, which has a large stock of mainly older apartment buildings, and it is supposed, it will also be anticipated to have a positive impact on neighboring properties and enhance the area. As Steph has pointed out, the bonus of one thirty-eight is dependent on our meeting all of the items listed in the table. So the reason we came forward with this number of one ninety-one in total is because we calculated what the maximum amount of units would be allowed should we hit all the bonus thresholds. So it could very well be that as staff reviews our plans, a project, and it goes forward, it may be that less than one ninety-one get built. But we're asking based on what the maximum could be. The whole NRO was, and the, and the bank of five thousand units was put together specifically for this purpose. And it's not, it's not just a coincidence that we're the first ones to come in because the economy has been such that no one's going to be building anything of this type of magnitude. And that's why we think that granting this project would be something tremendously beneficial to the entire area. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions or to be cross-examined by anybody in the audience, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Yeah, that's what happens. You can be cross-examined.
I guess the question about the bonus units, since it's never been done before, and a substantial number, it's almost two acres or more than two acres, there'd be forty for the affordable workforce, workforce housing. Suppose there are a minimum number of applicants for workforce housing. While the building is already designed, how does you ratchet back those forty units?
Well, you asked staff that question. We have about a two hundred and forty-three person waiting list right now. And I would ask, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but because this is something that Carfor does, perhaps you can satisfy your concern.
Paula Roman, Carfor, thirteen ninety-eight Southwest First Street. I think that the question is really, the answer to your question lies in the waiting list that the city has. In the history of us developing, we have never had any problems in filling any one of our buildings within months. And the, the report that was recently completed supports that as well. So there is demand within your city, and there's definitely demand within the county. We're, we're proposing to give priority to the residents of the city of North Miami.
Then I have to ask you a question.
Yes.
Most of, many of the people on the city's waiting list are families with children. How many two- and three-bedroom apartments do you plan in this structure?
We can build as needed. We have, both of these developments house families, which is why we have playgrounds in them as well. We have, is it like thirty, thirty of the units are three and four bedrooms or, you know, it really, we haven't designed it yet. So if you say that there's greater demand for families than there are for elderly or a significant amount of each, then that's what we design.
Okay.